Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order the mayor and commissioners for Monday, May 11th. Will you stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need to get the approval of minutes for the April 28th town meeting. Some of you have reviewed that. Can I get a motion to approve the April 28th town meeting?
Move we approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. We have no reportings of any executive sessions, so we're going to move forward into our public presentations, and that is Mr. Jeff Sellers, who is presenting a change in zoning regulations for Wellington Manor. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time. My name is Jeff Sellers. I am a commercial real estate broker with Montgomery Brothers Commercial Real Estate here in Rising Sun. Tonight, I'd like to make a specific request for a text amendment change to the current town of Rising Sun zoning ordinance for agricultural land use. I currently have the 126-acre former Van Dyke Farm, Wellington Manor, whatever you choose to call it, listed for sale at Route 1 and Red Pump Road. The farm was annexed into the town of Rising Sun, as many of you know, as R2 residential, but was taken back by the financing bank after the developers lost it in foreclosure at the end of 2014. The bank called me to list the property. I do quite a bit of business around here, so I gladly accepted that after talking to them and discussing it with them. One of the things that I was not aware of, and the bank wasn't either, was that the rezoning to R2 does not allow for agricultural use in any manner whatsoever. So, I'm requesting that a new text amendment allow agricultural use to remain on this large parcel, and in order to do that, the R2 zoning would have to allow for agricultural use as well. The farm has been farmed every season since it was sold in 2005 by the original owners, which is something that is just hard to get your brain wrapped around with our economy and the craziness of real estate. But it is still being farmed currently by the Van Dyke family. R1 zoning allows for many agricultural uses. In fact, in the letter I wrote, which I'm not sure if you have a copy of, in Section 12, 502, under permitted uses for R1 zoning, in addition to single-family residential district, it allows for 20 allowable ag uses under R1. R2, Section 12, 503, which is the exact same copy, the exact same explanation of single-family residential district, has zero agricultural permitted uses for R2. So, I'm asking for that because the land itself, the 126 acres, has an ag value right now because of the lack of demand for residential. Not saying it could never be used for residential, but the zoning would stay the same as R2. It would just allow for agricultural use as well, just like it has been for the last 10 years. So, that's my request. Be glad to take any questions that you have on that.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Would not something like this have to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission first?
Actually, this is a planning and zoning situation, but the ordinances are pretty clear, and the town has invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in that property towards the residential use that it was asked for when it was originally brought in and zoned for that purpose. And part of the future financial recovery of the money we've laid out in lawsuits and in the water and sewer plant building was part of the plan going forward for that property. My question is, why are the Van Dykes still farming it? If they don't own it, somebody else owned it, and it was going forward as residential?
Calvin might be able to speak to this a little bit, but the residential developers, who I do not know and have not spoken with, the residential developers, I am assuming, allowed them to keep farming it, could have been paying a farming, you know, lease, land lease, and things like that. Not something that I'm aware of, but they have not stopped farming it since their sale in '05. In fact, when I spoke to them this year, I actually asked Mr. Van Dyke to not plant in the spring because I was selling it, and I know that with Maryland law, you have to allow them to harvest it. The bank, because of not knowing what's going on, has actually allowed them to plant, so you can see it's been tilled recently, things like that. So, we've got another season of it with them, but I don't think, I think they just kept doing it because it's, you know, it's always been allowed, and they weren't using it at the time, so.
Yeah. I mean, I think no matter what, anything that were to happen there would be after the sewer plant construction's completed. I mean, at a minimum, right? I mean, I don't think we can approve anything realistically there until that's done. So, the...
Approved for residential use?
Like any kind of, anything, I mean, anything to be built there couldn't be done until after the sewer plant's completed, right?
Well, with ag use, you wouldn't be required to the sewer plant.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that the current crop that went in the ground, it's not like you wouldn't be able to harvest it before anything could possibly even start there. So, it's not, I don't see any issue with that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's allowable. Sure.
And your concern is that the property now has more value as farmland than possible building land?
It does, and I have two contracts on the property, because we were unaware that it was R2.
Well, I think, are you, you with Montgomery Brothers?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure Mr. Montgomery knew that.
I'm just, well, the listing, the listing that I took on, there was no discussion of that. It was residential, so...
I mean, we've only been, headlines in the paper for the past five years have been about the Frappel lawsuit over Wellington Manor and the residential district going on there. He was well aware of that.
Is there...
Is that relevant to the...
Well, saying that you weren't aware of it at that time, I think that's...
I wouldn't have taken the listing if I had known that.
Yeah. I think that was, you know, that should have been researched a little more, because that thing has been headlines for years in this community, and we've spent a lot of money toward making that property viable for that developer at that time, who sued us for quite some time.
Right.
Like I said, we have hundreds and thousands of dollars wrapped up in that, too, that we'd love to get back, but we never will, unless it moves forward as a residential community as originally planned and asked for by the person who asked for annexing at that time and for the zoning at that time, because that is predominantly a residential community up through there now.
Can I incline or inquire?
Sure.
About what type of agricultural use, you said you have a contract on it for? What kind of agricultural use they would use it for?
I have two contracts right now. One is an Amish farmer. That is either his second or third farm that he'd be making, and then the second one is a, one of the largest mushroom farms in Kennet Square.
Does anyone have any more questions? Are we going to...
I don't think we can, I think this is, I could be wrong, but I am under the impression that Planning and Zoning are going to have to look at this and make a recommendation to us before we do anything.
Close to that. You would have to change the zoning, because the only thing the Planning Commission could do now would say they can't approve it because it's not approved for agricultural. The zoning change, the zoning would have to be changed before any of the boards could look at it.
What I was thinking was if they requested a special exception to allow that, that would have to go before the Planning and Zoning.
It actually sounds like what he's recommending, excuse me, is that we change R2 to allow farming, is how I understood.
Agricultural use, not rezoning, not asking to rezone or to de-annex it, just allowing agricultural use.
He's asking us to actually change our zoning to allow different use on R2.
Which is purely a text amendment change. That's, that's all I'm, all I'm asking for. Which is allowed in the R1. And I, and I know there's a reason for R2. I don't quite understand the reason, because it's the exact same description as R1, but I understand it is R2. And as I mentioned, if we had known that R2 was the, and not allowed for ag use, then there really wouldn't have been a reason to take the listing, because it does not have any value as residential. Without water, it's a dead piece of property. So, until that water comes down, it just is not able to be used for residential. I had a 55 and older facility that wanted to come in. Can't do anything till water, so.
Does anyone have any more questions? Do we want to review this and then get back to Mr. Sellers, or what is the board's pleasure regarding this?
It would probably be, in fairness, to allow the Planning, you know, talk to the chairman of Planning and Zoning, get the zoning board's input on it, and then a recommendation back from the zoning board on this. Let them research it a little more.
Yeah, I'm certainly not prepared to move forward on this tonight. I mean, I, we've, not, we, but in the past, boards have made kind of quick decisions on things that have come back to bite them, and I've witnessed those, and I don't care to partake in those.
Absolutely.
If you don't learn from past lessons, then...
All right, so, Mr. Sellers, if you wouldn't mind contacting Calvin about setting up in a time with the Planning and Zoning Board, and then they will go, you can go forward to the Planning and Zoning Board, and they will come back to us with a recommendation.
Planning and zoning meets on the 18th of this month. I think we're still meeting at 6:30 or 6 o'clock.
In all fairness, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm not sure the mechanism of how you go before the Planning Commission to have them consider something that's technically not permitted in the code. I'm not sure how you do that.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that it's, Mr. Sellers going before Planning and Zoning. I think it's more, any idea of a text amendment would have to be brought up by Planning and Zoning.
Well, it could be done by the board.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, I don't know that it's necessarily Mr. Sellers so much as having Planning and Zoning review the code and make a recommendation, right?
Yes. Or get a legal interpretation on it, too. Because as, as I had said to Mr. Sellers when we had first spoken, I'm going to say to you, I don't profess to know this like the back of my hand, but I had expressed to him some concerns about there's a thing called spot zoning in our world, whereas they don't, this, the regulatory agencies of the state do not want you to change zoning locations outside of the window, umbrella of your comprehensive plan, which is what you're supposed to sit down every six years, do your comprehensive plan and determine your zoning districts. And although it's, I can't sit here and tell you that it's something that you cannot do, they do call it spot zoning. And although Mr. Sellers is not suggesting that the zoning be changed for that area, it is sort of the next step below, stop spot zoning and asking for a text amendment change, which in essence sort of does the same thing to some degree. I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that's absolute. I just know in talking to the attorney before about that, it's, it's...
I mean, do we want to open up, like, the text amendment? I understand what you're saying, but that could also be Pandora's Box. I mean, you take how much R2 there is in town offhand, I don't even know which ones are in R2, R3. You know, I think Bryant, or Maple Heights, the rest, that's probably R3, and, but there may be some R2, like, I'm trying to think what it is across from...
Knutson's Farm?
Yeah, Knutson's Farm, maybe R2 versus R3. So, do you want to start creating situations where you could have ag mixed right in the middle of residential or vice versa?
Well, in all fairness to Mr. Sellers, when we were talking about that, we had brought up the same topic.
Okay.
And maybe one of the, if we were to go forward with the text amendment, there would be a, a minimum amount of acreage, that an R2 that has 50 acres or more, or something like that, could be the text change, so.
It would keep you from that small neighborhood farm.
Right.
Three acres.
Yeah.
Somebody farming right in the middle of it.
It's all going to be, it really comes down to what the town's preference is in regards to that. It's, it could be as simple as going to the attorney and asking for a legal interpretation, and if it's okay, then it's going to come down to you guys making an opinion about it, or you could go to the Planning Commission as part of a land development training exercise to see what their thoughts are about it.
Yeah.
And by all means, that, that could include Mr. Sellers in the discussion.
Yeah.
I just, sort of what you had suggested earlier about some, the way some things have happened, no offense to Mr. Sellers, in the past, they used to have people come before the Planning Commission, and what people thought was taking place and what was actually taking place ended up being two different things. So, if we're going to go down that road, I'm just cautioning that we need to make sure we don't give Mr. Sellers an expectation that he's going to the Planning Commission.
Right.
And they say, oh, yeah, this is a great idea, and the board could turn it down in the future. So, I'm just saying, in fairness to Mr. Sellers, that we'd be, we'd be careful about how we're suggesting to handle it.
But given what this is, I'd like to at least include them.
Yeah.
The major difference between an R1 zoning and an R2 zoning is the size, how big or small the houses were?
Density?
No, a lot of it is the amount of houses you can have per acreage, the density.
Which would affect the...
Is one of the things of it, yeah. How many houses you can have on an acre.
That's the major difference.
Yeah, that's one of the major differences.
I don't mean this in a, anything towards Mr. Sellers, but I also have a little bit of a hesitation, because all of you know on this board how many complaints we get about the mushroom farm that is on Hopewell Road and the smell that comes.
I knew you were going to bring that up.
The smell that comes from the Hopewell Road farm. We do get a substantial amount of complaints. So, to put one on the other side of town, obviously...
But no matter which direction, wind's blowing.
All right, let me speak to that just for one minute. I knew that would come up, I kind of, I thought the same thing at the beginning. So, when I got that contract, I went with the owner personally to tour the facility. It is one of the largest farms in Kennet. They have the top, top, state-of-the-art equipment for aerating, compost, and things like that. I was there for an hour and a half, and never one time did I smell the mushroom, the Avondale, Avon Grove, you know, mushroom smell. And he explained to me, that's because he turns it. And what's amazing is that he used Hopewell Road as an example of those who don't do that. So, he's very proud of his, of their system and their technology, and said if that's something that it was a concern, and that was really the, one of the only issues, that he would have no problem coming to speak and actually having you see it. That he said, he's only going to do two things out there, and there would not be any issues with that whatsoever. So, you can take, don't take my word for that, take his, but you could prove that out, which I would do.
Does anyone have any more questions? Hearing none, from what I'm being told from the town administrator. We will just get back to you, Mr. Sellers, once we speak to Planning and Zoning Board and then get an interpretation from the town attorney.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Next on the agenda is Resolution 2015-02. Before I read this, the town administrator is going to speak a little bit on this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the resolution regarding our Sustainable Communities designation. I'm not sure how well this is going to work here, because it's not, I'm not quite sure this is formatted the way it needs to be. Essentially, what this is, is it, back in the day, and I'm going to say in the early 2000s, municipalities had a community legacy designation and a couple other designations, which basically these designations paved the way, they paved the way for, these designations paved the way for communities to get access to grant monies and different financing vehicles. And the thought behind that is grant monies come from taxpayers' money, obviously, and to sort of put some controls over who's going to get grant money, they want, the regulatory agencies want to make sure that, in this case, government bodies have thought about what they're going to be doing with their community, instead of just getting grant money for anything willy-nilly all over the place, and there's no structure to it, and before you know it, good projects fall by the wayside because of poor planning. So, the community legacy designation was done away with roughly, I think, in 2010, and replaced by a Sustainable Community designation. And all a Sustainable Community designation is, is to make sure that the powers-to-be, it could be residents, the elected body, are looking at the community and deciding what they want to do in the community that makes it sustainable, so that any grant monies that are put towards the community, there's an expectation that the community is still going to either be able to, to do that project that they got grant monies for, or to still be in existence, you know, down the road. So, under the Sustainable Communities designation, and I apologize here, because again, I just got this, and it's not really formatted, the Sustainable Communities is divided into six action groups. And when we did our Economic Development, RFP, we asked some of the vendors to do our Sustainable Communities application. Without this designation, we don't get access to certain grant funds. So, we asked those private entities to do our grant application, and if you recall, we got prices ranging from $40,000 to, $15,000 to roughly $60,000 to complete this application for us. The Maryland, the Department of Community Housing and Development, who was on our committee to review the economic development, said, hey, we think we can get some Maryland, University of Maryland students and do this application for you. So, they've already spent, I'm going to say maybe 30 or 40 hours going through the application for us, and it's not showing up very well on the screen, but basically, they divided our community into six different areas, one being the general environment, the economy, transportation, housing, quality of life in society, and smart growth. And then within those different categories, there are what the town would want to do in relation to those categories, what the strengths are and what the weaknesses are, and then an action plan. So, let's say, under transportation, you know, obviously, we're lacking in transportation, because we don't have a rail, rail service near us. There's no public transportation, so to, so to speak, in terms of busing or something like that. We just have the ability of people to get in their cars and go where they want to go. So, under transportation, if we were to, our weakness would be, we don't have any rail service, and we don't have any public transportation. So, that would be our weakness. And so, under an action plan, we would say, well, we're going to invest, you know, $10 billion to get Amtrak to run a rail through here. I'm being facetious, but...
Yeah, not really.
Yeah. You know, that's what I'm talking about. It's not realistic for us to put that in a Sustainable Communities application, because we don't have any ability to be able to do that. And so, in this plan that Commissioner Warnock has a copy of, the state had broken down these different categories. And long story short, we need to take the work that the students did, based upon a couple technical meetings with the staff, and sit down in front of a, a select group to make sure that these strengths are really strengths, or to make a better argument on our strengths, clearly identify what our weaknesses are, and then put together what our strategies would be, like for the environment, for instance. The environment would be the condition of the housing stock, the properties. Mayor Marion has been pushing a property maintenance, or advocating a property maintenance code. So, under one of our long-range plans would be listed to adopt a property maintenance code. So, this is sort of like a roadmap of all the various things we need to do. So, this resolution, I suggested to the mayor that we put together a little technical advisory group to take this information over the next two weeks, refine it, bring it back to this board for adoption, and then that would be the application that we would submit to the state on roughly June 6th, in order to get our Sustainable Communities Plan adopted, and then pave the way for us to get these grant monies in the future. So, the resolution that you have in front of you basically is to put that five or six person committee together.
Thank you, town administrator. I will read Resolution 2015-02. Whereas the town located in Cecil County, Maryland, is a municipality organized under and governed by Article 23A of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws, and whereas in 2010, the governor signed into law smart, green, and growing legislation, House Bill 475-2010 Session, the Sustainable Communities Act of 2010, the act was passed by the Maryland General Assembly to enhance the future of growth, development, and sustainability in Maryland. This law established the Sustainable Communities designation in order to strengthen reinvest, reinvestment, and revitalization in Maryland's older communities. And whereas the Sustainable Communities Act enhanced an existed rehabilitation tax credit into the Sustainable Communities Tax Credit Program, it also simplified the framework for designated revitalization target areas in the Community Legacy and Neighborhood Business Works programs, establishing a new transportation focus on older communities. And whereas the communities who achieve the designation of a Sustainable Community under the act are granted access to various programs for the benefits of their residents and businesses that promote and facilitate equi, equi...
Equitable.
Equitable, affordable housing by expanding energy-efficient housing choices for people of all ages, incomes, races, and ethnicities, to increase mobility and lower the combined house of, cost of housing and transportation. Because the law favors transit-oriented developments, Maryland citizens located in a Sustainable Community are afforded more transportation choices, which will decrease household transportation costs, reduce our nation's dependence on foreign oil, improve air quality, reduce greenhouse gases, gases, gas emissions, and promote public health. And whereas the town of Rising Sun does not have this designation as a Sustainable Community, and as a result, does not have access to grants and low-interest loans that help achieve all of the above-listed benefits. And whereas the mayor and commissioners have made a commitment to achieve this Sustainable Communities designation for the benefits of our residents and businesses within the town of Rising Sun. And whereas the Maryland Department of Community Housing and Development and the Maryland Department of Planning have been working with the town's staff to compile all the necessary data in order to designate the target areas and to define the scope of the town's designation as a Sustainable Community. And whereas the community, whereas the data has been compiled and forwarded to the town for review by a Sustainable Community Technical Committee, that will be charged with processing the information and assisting DHCD and MDP with a completed Sustainable Communities designation application, and final recommendations to the mayor and commissioners for adoption. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun wished to appoint a five-member Sustainable Community Technical Advisory Committee, consisting of Mayor Travis Marion, Economic Development Commissioner David Warnock, Planning Commission Ex officio Commissioner Alan Othonreath, Chairperson of the Rising Sun Arts Council Shelley LaSheer, and Amanda Cameron Vaughan from the Rising Sun Economic Development Commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this 11th day of May 2015. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All I would say is, we've, we've all attended and heard some of the things that this designation will get our communities, from low-interest loans to a lot of grant opportunities, and I think that is very important for the town of Rising Sun. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you.
Mayor, the one thing I just wanted to add that's really critically important is, not only does it give the town that access, but it gives our business owners that access, too. With our Sustainable Communities designation, building owners can get facade improvement grants, they could get grants that are specific to some type of thing, maybe bed and breakfast or something like that.
Tax credits.
They can get specific things through this designation, so it's a benefit to our business owners in town also.
Thank you. Resolution 2015-03 is the historical commission appointments. Whereas the town of Rising, whereas the town located in Cecil County, Maryland, is municipality organized under and governed by Article 23 of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws, and whereas Article 8 of the town code titled Historical Commission contains Section 2-801 titled Purpose and Membership, which also contains Subnote 2, which grants the mayor and commissioners the authority to appoint two members to the Board of Directors for the Historical Commission to serve two-year, to, to serve a two-year term. And whereas the town of Rising Sun appointed Ms. Diane Earhart and Thomas S. Mummy to these positions in February of 2013, with their respective terms to expire in February of 2015. And whereas due to the resignation of Ms. Earhart from this board, Mrs. Dee Emsley was appointed to finish the term of Ms. Earhart in October of 2013. And whereas these terms have since expired and must be reappointed, now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor, that the Board of Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun wished to appoint Mr. Thomas S. Mummy and Ms. Joanne Jamison to the Board of Directors of the town of Rising Sun Historical Commission, who shall both serve a two-year term set to expire in February of 2017. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this 11th day of May 2015. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
I so move.
I so move.
It's been moved?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion?
And both agreed to serve?
Yes. From what I've been told, Mr. Mummy reached out to the town administrator, and he also inquired about the second person that wanted to serve. So we went from there. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2015-04, which is the Declaration of Official Intent to Reimburse Itself for Construction Costs, and that's the town administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is fairly straightforward, and those who were in attendance back in 2009, early 2010, we had to adopt, we were advised to adopt the same resolution when we had, when we embarked upon our exercise in getting the necessary finances to fix the sewer plant. And basically, what this resolution is doing is saying that, for instance, when we built the sewer plant, we had about maybe seven to eight, seven, eight, nine hundred thousand dollars of soft cost, leading up to actually awarding the bid in terms of applying for the necessary financing through USDA, getting our consultants on board to work with MDE to see exactly what it was we were going to build, working with USDA to do the preliminary engineering reports, figuring out what our rates would have to be at that time. We had a lot of money involved in that. And what this resolution is going to do is allow the town to reimburse itself, which basically means, instead of having at that time nine hundred homes paying for that eight hundred thousand dollars of cost before we even put a shovel in the ground, and enabled us to basically borrow that eight hundred thousand dollars over a forty-year period as part of the total money that we got from USDA to build the sewer plant. So it spreads that upfront cost out over a period of time. So we're not going to have quite as much upfront cost in the Chester Water Line program here, but still, it makes sense to spread those costs out over a period of time, instead of really hitting the residents and the town with those upfront costs now. So that's basically what this resolution is. Without the resolution, you can't do this. So Resolution 2015-04, Resolution declaring the town of Rising Sun's official intent to reimburse to itself for monies expended for replacement and construction of water, sanitary sewer, and utility lines, for proceeds of bonds issued to finance the costs thereof. Whereas the Commissioners of Rising Sun, the town is a municipal corporation due reorganize and existing under the laws of state of Maryland pursuant to a charter adopted in accordance with Article blah, 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 Constitution of Maryland, and Section 4-201 of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as amended. Whereas the town is proclaimed as a perpetual entity with the right to pass laws, and whereas the town intends to replace or construct improvements to its water supply system and its sewage system, the project, to meet the needs of the town and its citizens, and whereas the town expects to spend money from its various funds to conduct engineering studies, solicit bids from contractors, purchase equipment, obtain professional services, acquisition and construction costs, and other costs and expenses in connection with construction and financing of the project. And whereas the town intends to issue its bonds or other obligations to pay the project costs described in this resolution in the maximum amount of approximately ten million dollars. And whereas the town reasonably expects to reimburse itself in the proceeds of the bonds for expenditures related to the project costs made prior to the issuance of the bonds. Therefore, being enacted and resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun introduce this resolution on this 11th day of May 2015, which reaffirms and hereby declares that the town intends to reimburse itself in the proceeds of the bonds, any expenditures for project costs made by the town prior to the issuance of the bonds, and that this resolution constitutes the town's official intent under Treasury Regulation 1.150-2. And be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this 11th day of May 2015. The last thing I'll add for you, just to make it clear, people are going to hear the ten million dollars, that's not the cost of the project, that's just a placeholder so we don't have to come back later on and amend this resolution.
Move, we approve a resolution?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Town Administrator, Mr. Mayor?
No discussion?
Huh?
No, just kidding.
Just, just to, I mean, just for everybody's assurance out there, in addition to what you said, this is also not something new. This is really goes, this is the formal legally structure in order to do what we've been doing for a while now, anyway. I mean, it's just formalizing the bond portion of the financing structure, but it's all been planned along, all along.
Yes.
I just wanted to clear that.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, whether I made that any clearer?
Commissioner Walker? You have a selection of a third-party contractor to operate the new sewer plant.
Right. I have here, and you all got a copy of this in your packet, a letter from the town engineer at the sewer plant, covering the appointment of a, an operator for the new sewer plant. This letter states that CDM Smith has reviewed the proposals received for contract operations at the wastewater treatment plant. Invitations to bid were sent to four entities, MES Environmental Services, Miller Environmental, Severn Trent Environmental Services, Singh Operational Services. Proposals were due on April 28, 2015, at 3:00 PM. Both Severn Trent and MES declined to submit proposals. Two proposals were received prior to the deadline from Miller Environmental and Singh Operational Services. Both firms attended a pre-proposal meeting and toured the wastewater treatment plant. We reviewed the proposals based on the evaluation criteria and developed the attached summary. Although both firms are qualified to provide the services, Miller Environmental was clearly the higher-ranked firm. CDM Smith recommends the ward to Miller Environmental. The second page that you got states that the corporate profile qualifications for both firms have the required number of years and experience and provide similar services at other plants. They both have the experience and technical qualifications required. They both have the financial stability to do the job. Miller's proposal was eighty-six thousand twenty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Singh's annual fee is a hundred ninety-nine thousand three fifty-two. The major difference in the proposals is that Singh proposed to have somebody on-site more hours a week than Miller. The engineer has taken all of this into consideration and recommends that Miller be the firm appointed to become our plant operator.
Would you like to make a motion to?
I move that we appoint Miller as our, the operator of our new wastewater treatment plant.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question. The, Commissioner Walker, the eighty-six thousand, is that the price we would be, if we go forward with them, the price we're going to be sticking to for awarding them the contract, or?
That's, yeah.
That's okay. Just curious about that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Now, I didn't say this at the beginning, but one of the reasons we're doing this now is that the plant's almost ready to start, so we need them on hand before we start.
Now, are we budgeted good for that? I know going forward, you knew we were going to have to do this, so were we budgeting in that area of the kind of money we were going to need to spend in the upcoming year for a third party?
These, these funds have been, it's my understanding, are covered under the
Criteria?
The project costs, the MDE money, and, I mean, the USDA money and all that. And then, for the rest of this year, and then, of course, we'll adopt a new budget to cover those things.
Once it's up and running, then the charge for it will pay for it going forward.
Yeah.
I assume, yeah.
Calvin, the, the, paying for that long run would be dotted proprietary fund, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's part of the operations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Thank you. All right. It's time for citizens' input. And Mrs. D. Emsley, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This is in relation to Mr. Sellers' request about Wellington Manor. The thought that I kept having as he was making his request was, I've been here for a number of years, and I remember all the problems about this property. If it was zoned R2, it was zoned R2 for a reason. If there's a difference between R1 and R2, there's a reason that there's a difference. I don't know what they are, I don't know why it was zoned R2, but please, take it into consideration very carefully, making any change to what was once agreed. There was a reason it was done the way that it was done, so please, consider it very carefully. Thank you. And I live on that side of Route 1, and I don't want to smell a mushroom farm. That's beside the point.
I'd like to tell you, reassure you that we have those same concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Emsley. Would anyone else like to speak tonight? No? Okay. We'll move forward into the mayor's report. Oh, excuse me, we'll move forward into the chief's report. Thank you.
During the almost two-week period from April 28 to May 11, we've responded to only one hundred and fifty-eight calls for service. And I say only, that's still a high number, but it's more or less the officers outperforming different tasks to make sure, the proactive type of task, to make sure that the community's It can also be said that during that period of time, a lot of the focus was changed from Rising Sun to different parts of the state, so there's not a whole lot for us to report at this time. So if there's any questions, that'll be the end of my report. We didn't have a whole lot of trends or things happening in a community that stand out for now.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Town Administrator, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do.
No report?
Yes, I do. A couple of things that we're working on, these were part of the agenda that I gave you last week to look at. Couple of things that we're looking on, looking at, we're going to resubmit the Economic Development, RFP, out now that we have taken a big chunk of the Sustainable Community project out of it. I also have received a grant application from USDA to potentially get the cost of that study covered, so that's due this Friday. So that's what we'll be working on. The other item is, when the town first got involved in code enforcement, it originally was going to do the electrical inspections, require the electrical permits, by going the way of allowing third-party inspection agencies to provide the inspection. Again, from my background across the state line, that's typically how the municipalities in Pennsylvania did it, is they would require the permit, but there would be a recognized third-party agency that would do the inspections. In Cecil County at that time, there was only one entity that was doing those inspections. Since that time, the county itself has opened up the pool of available third-party inspection agencies, and now there are three in the county that the county recognizes as being able to do those inspections. But the county does not provide that oversight for the town of Rising Sun or the town of Elton. I've had some conversations with the town of Elton in the past because it's, we wanted to get a little bit more organization in how we're doing these electrical inspections, so we, it's not hit or miss on people getting permits for electrical, and then they might be able to get a third-party electrical inspection or not. So one way of streamlining that would be for the town of Rising Sun to enter into an agreement with one of those inspection agencies, very similar to you, you know, you work with KCI engineers to provide your engineering for the town, the town attorney, the accountant, things like that. So we would enter into an agreement with the, trying to think, Walter W. Graeger Jr. from Bay Area Inspection Agency, and this would be a one-year agreement. There are some components of the agreement that I still want to work through, so I'm not going to put it in front of you yet to ratify it or not, but I just wanted to let you know that that's what we're working on, is entering into an agreement with a third-party agency to streamline how the electrical inspections are done. And plus, it'll also give us a little bit more accountability on what exactly is going done. Because right now, there's, there's nobody really patrolling this end of the county up here, looking to make sure that people are getting the proper electrical permits when they're doing work. And a lot of homeowners at times don't realize the importance of getting a permit for work, more importantly, get a permit for electrical work. So by us entering into this agreement, we will have a, a more qualified person out there making sure that this stuff is done properly, and it will come under our oversight, instead of it just being willy-nilly, the way it is right now. The other thing that we're working on is the state fire marshal, I've been in communication, I think I was including the mayor and Commissioner Authenreth in this, as the ex officio for planning, for the Planning Commission, is that the state fire marshal has inquired as to whether or not I would be interested, on behalf of the town of Rising Sun, in securing a designation as an Assistant State Fire Inspector. Not a fire marshal, we always have to make sure we're clear with that, is that we do our own fire inspections here in the town of Rising Sun, which we're allowed to do, but the state would like to streamline it a little bit more and have a position here come under that umbrella, so it's more seamless. So it's not going to be any change in what we're doing here, just, they would just like for us, they would like for me to become a, an Assistant State Fire Inspector for them to cover this area. I don't anticipate that meeting, that it would be outside of the town of Rising Sun, it's specific just for our inspections here. The other thing in our conversations is that, back in 2007, when we adopted the codes, the international code, which some of you might remember was a later offspring of the BOKA codes, which everybody's used to, the international codes replaced BOKA back in the early 2000s. And the state of Maryland was lagging a little bit in complete adoption of those codes. They did not recognize in '07 the International Plumbing Code, and to some degree, they did not recognize the International Fire Code either. The good thing about the International Fire Code is that it ties seamlessly into the Building Code, the Residential Code, the Plumbing Code, the Mechanical, Mechanical Code. So if you were to use just simply the NFPA code that the state uses, you could have a lot of, you could have contradictions between telling somebody to do something in the Building Code, telling them it must match the Fire Code, but if you haven't adopted the International Fire Code, you don't have any enabling legislation to enforce that. So we adopted the International Fire Code with the intent of utilizing the Life Safety Code, which is what the state uses. So in our discussions and making all this seamless, completing an ordinance that will adopt the Life Safety Code in addition to the International Fire Code, and it'll just give us a much better package for enforcing life safety issues.
What's the other acronym, the BOKA?
The ICC. That's the International Code Council. And the International Code Council has the Building Code, the IBC, the IRC, things like, that's what the acronym is for. And the International Code Council has the building code, the IBC, the IRC, things like, that's what the acronym is for. So, that's an ordinance that I'll be bringing for you guys to consider in the near future. The other thing is, as the mayor has talked about before, I'm about 99% through a property maintenance code. In the next week or so, I should get it done and distribute it to you. One of the issues that we have, and I know, I know what our goal is in this property maintenance code, because lord knows, we all get enough complaints, we just got one, I guess the end of last week, about the barking dogs and stuff like that. We're always, and we're getting high grass complaints. What I've always said is that the way everything is written now, and I'll say it for what it's worth off the record, because we don't want to let our residents necessarily know, but we don't really have any enforcement action on any of these codes. If we tell somebody they have to cut their grass, they could just say, "I'm not going to cut your grass." We could write all the citations we want, it's not going to go anywhere. We can tell them they have to plow, you know, get the snow off their sidewalks. We can make a lot of noise, but we don't really have, the way the county is set up, to be able to do anything with that, because these violations have to be handled by the state's attorney's office. So, you're asking the state's attorney, who's busy in all the high-profile things they're doing, you're asking them to assign somebody to go sit in court, wait for the next case to come up, because everybody in the town of Rising Sun is upset that maybe somebody never cuts their grass, but you're asking that state's attorney to have that same enthusiasm for that. And so, it's, it's just, you know, it's not, it's not a good business plan in enforcing your codes. So, as part of the property maintenance code, I've been working with the town attorney to create municipal infractions that are very similar to what the police department does right now, where when they get a speeding, if they issue a speeding ticket or somebody parking illegally, that doesn't get handled by the state's attorney. They come, they have 20 days to come in and pay that fine, whatever it is, and they can choose to go to court and have their day in court. Or, if they don't pay that fine in 20 days, the chief can issue a summons and they have to go to court, but it's not the state's attorney that stands up there and presents it to the judge. It would be the police officer, in our case, it would be the code enforcement officer. So, we're trying to give ourselves something that's going to meet the goal of what we're trying to achieve. So, that's what we're finalizing in the property maintenance code. There's a lot of stuff going on, guys, I mean, just an incredible amount of stuff. We've been talking about our financial long-range plans. My impression is that at the next meeting, the board is not interested in raising taxes, so we're going to balance the budget with the tax structure that we have. And I shouldn't say that they're not interested. The board recognizes that now's not necessarily the time to be raising taxes. That sounds a little disingenuous to you guys, and I'm saying you're not interested. You've thought long and hard about it, and now it's just not the time to be doing that. We have a, I've said it back in February, we have about $15 to $18 million of various needs facing this town that don't include the replacement of police cars, or public works vehicles, or some normal operating costs. These are fixing 12,000 linear feet of defective lines, so we don't shut the whole town down every time we have a water main break. There's paving on the streets that Commissioner Arthur Reith is looking at. There's the other half of our sewer and water and completing the water side. And I always say this, there's 900 homes, and somewhere those 900 homes, we've got to put ourselves in a position to pay that $15 to $18 million off over the next, you know, however long it takes for these repairs to need. I'm presenting a worst-case scenario, so that there's nowhere but to go up with everything that's going on. I don't want to see us be targeting for some numbers here, and then our projections come out wrong and we go down and end up having to spend more money. So, a worst-case scenario is $15 to $18 million. It could all be in the next five years, I think more realistically, it won't, some of the stuff won't happen until about 10 years, but we can't, we can no longer, as we've talked about, go into every budget cycle saying, "Well, what are we going to do this year?" And we have these really drastic tax increases as a result of it, because the needs are not going to go away. They're going to be there no matter what we do. So, the exercise for this board over the next month and a half is to continue all our work and our studies to figure out how to generate this $15 to $18 million over the next five, six, seven years to put us in a position to do that. And I'll leave you with this analogy, and I've been talking to the staff members about it, because the staff members really need to look long and hard at their budgets, is, I almost look at it as, I'll give you a football analogy of, and let's say it's, you know, a football team, a national football team, the Ravens, that made the playoffs, and when they look at the team, they say, "You know what, we could probably make the playoffs again next year, but are we in a position to win the Super Bowl?" And that's why teams go through a rebuilding, where we as fans don't necessarily know why certain decisions are made, but they're made so that the, the business of the football team can be more productive. That's what we're looking at here as the community of Rising Sun. We're going to need to rebuild over the next three, four, or five years to meet these goals, so that on the other side, we'll be leaving generations of residents with a stable tax base, stable revenues, money set aside to do these things, money to provide a better quality of life. So, I know I'm hammering a dead point, a dead issue here, a reoccurring issue, but I think, you know, having been here since '07, we've watched this town over the last four or five years not be able to take the next step in this planning. And I think it's really important that we, as we all know, to let our residents know what's coming down the road, that we, we need to start a really good plan over the next five or six years to achieve these goals, or we're just going to spin our wheels. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Town Administrator.
If I may, you mentioned the budget. I think we very, we should have a budget meeting fairly soon, where we can start deciding how we are going to best handle these problems.
Yes.
Absolutely. My mayor's report is pretty light today, tonight. I think Commissioner Warnock will go into it a little bit, but I had a Cecil Leadership class come down and they, we all, we, my Cecil Leadership class, every year, they have to do a service project for the community, and I was luckily enough, lucky enough to con them into coming to Rising Sun. So, we had about 30 people come out, and they did a terrific job down at Veterans Community Park. Like I said, Commissioner Warnock will talk about that. I did go on a walk-through with County Executive Terry Moore last week. She was very impressed with the park down there and the trail system that is going in, and she pledged the county's support for anything that we need down there, so I'm looking forward to holding her to that. Tomorrow, I will be seating my mayor's seat to a fourth grader. Ms. Emily Baker will be mayor for a day tomorrow, and I will be picking her up with Chief Peterson and signing over my power to her. So, that concludes my mayor's report.
So, we're once again going to have the youngest mayor in Maryland.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Did you see a new one was appointed today?
I said she's actually older than him.
Historical professor? Yes, she did win an essay contest, thank you, Marcia. She wrote an essay, and she was picked as the winner for Rising Sun Elementary School. I gave Commissioner Warnock and Commissioner Scully homework to do, because Conawingo Elementary sent me so many essays, it was about this high. So, I split them up and gave them each homework to pick a winner, and then I'm going to pick a winner. And the principal wants us to have three winners from Conawingo, so they will be coming later this month. And each one of them will be, I guess, co-mayors for the day, is how we're going to do it down there.
Commissioners.
Yeah. So, that is the mayor's report. I'm going to move into historical preservation commission. I don't think they have a report this evening. Any old business? Any new business? And tonight, I'm going to go ahead and skip the commissioners' comments, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn, no, I'm just kidding.
I'm amazed.
Commissioner Arthur Reith?
I don't have anything to report on for streets and sidewalk, but just to add something to what Calvin said, you know, we've gotten, we get a lot of emails about complaints from residents from high grass and yards not being taken care of. But one thing I want to speak about is the complaint we've been getting about barking dogs and free-range kitties running loose. Just want to appeal to the residents, you know, we don't want to go and have an ordinance for every little issue that our neighbors' animals could cause. So, residents, please be mindful of your neighbors. You know, everybody loves their animals, but after a certain point, small dogs and large dogs barking, when you have your windows open, can get a little annoying. If you have cats, don't let them run and use everybody's gardens for litter boxes. Be considerate of your neighbors, and, you know, don't leave your animals out while you're gone all day with, in the heat and no water. So, it's mostly what I'm saying, just be considerate. Don't make us have to pass ordinances and send the chief and his officers up to enforce them. Take care of your animals, be, be considerate of your neighbors. And if you see somebody's dog running loose, you know, help them catch it, or if their cat's out, you know, last thing I want to see is an animal on 273 that's been hit by a car. So, just be very considerate of your, your neighbors, is all I'm asking. Planning and zoning meets the 18th of this month, and I want to, you know, commend Dave and Travis for bringing Cecil Leadership down and all the work you guys did down there to the park. As an alumni of Cecil Leadership myself, class 2008, that was a very good job you did of getting them to come down and kick in some help here. Made a, oh man, it made a world of difference down there. And, you know, Dave, I see you down there all the time, coming home with your trailer and stuff. Been doing a lot of work there before the weeds grow up and everything, and we've got a cool place down there now. So, residents, when you go down to use it, watch out for the vandals. And if you see them, say something to them, call the chief, let our, let our officers know, because this group put in too much hard work to let it be vandalized. The new sliding boards up, don't let them vandalize that, because I see a lot of people down there in that park using it. And I guess we're going to use that for our movies in the park again this summer, because that's a great park for that, so, just. And I guess you're going to talk about tomorrow night's event, so I'll leave that to you. So, that's all I got tonight, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Arthur Reith. Commissioner Scully actually had to attend a funeral this evening, so she wasn't able to be with us. She let us know ahead of time that she wasn't going to be able to be here. Commissioner Walker?
I have nothing new to report, other than, and it, I'm, I just want to stress to you that when I first started as a commissioner and I went over to the wastewater treatment plant, it was a disaster-looking place. And as Dave can tell you, now it looks like it's, might be something there. And, and us hiring an operator tonight, to me, is kind of a cap on that whole situation. So, I'm very pleased about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Walker, and I know I speak for the board with all your hard work that you've put into that. I know it's something that you've been with us for, I mean, most of your term, you've been in charge of water and sewer, so thank you for your service. Commissioner Warnock?
So, I have a pretty extensive report, it's going to probably be about an hour or two, but, no, in all seriousness. First, to the water and sewer plant, I did get the opportunity to go with Commissioner Walker and Town Administrator Bonnberger to the sewer plant and look at where we're going to put our new water park in, in the current pond. No, just kidding. But in all seriousness, I mean, it's impressive what's coming along over there, and the potential for the remaining land over there once the lagoon's filled in, there's, you know, a lot of potential there, I think, so that'll be interesting when we, we get to there. On the parks and, okay, great, we have a presentation up. So, there's a lot of things that occurred, and I think last week, I really didn't come with a lot of information because of the activities right beforehand, but if you want to go ahead and advance the next slide. So, this kind of gives you an idea of the, where the Eagle Scout project is. The first picture shows when we very first started clearing. I mean, actually, it was so much brush, you couldn't even walk through there, so I think probably about a half an hour into clearing, I took a picture that day. And then some grading that occurred, followed by the stones, so the project, there's a bridge that'll cross that gap. It doesn't really look like much, but it's actually probably about a, about a foot and a half drop, and that area is classified as wetlands in between there. There's an old drain pipe that was there from the dairy, and it was graded. So, we got lucky that on either side of it, for a ways, isn't wetlands, but that was, that little section was deemed to be wetlands and, because where that pipe used to come out. So, anyway, we were building a bridge across that, so that kind of worked out well. Next slide. Just to give you an idea of, and I don't have, these weren't in the exact same position, but from winter time, you can see, you know, our pictures of, I mean, this is the gate up here, and there it is now. So, you can see how much clearing and the stones in, so we're coming along nicely on that section. Next slide. And so, here's where I'm going to kind of turn over and say, you know, a big thank you to Mayor Marion for bringing out Cecil Leadership Institute. I don't know how he conned them into it, but, I mean, I'm going to start, leave this slide up for a minute, and you can start to see like all the brush up in through here, these trees, and, I mean, these, you know, it's like all the logs and everything there. The mayor managed to get about 27 people, I think it was, out for four hours, so about 108 volunteer hours, if my math's correct, yeah. 108 volunteer hours for Saturday, last Saturday morning. That was after, he also helped with the Okra Watershed Association's Project Clean Stream, along with Morris Chapel had sent a few people out, and Rising Sun High School had a couple of kids, along with one of the teachers. And Matt Bernero, our Eagle Scout, was also there, along with a couple of scouts. And then, of course, Rupert, and I think Fred, I can't think of Fred's name, full name right now, but one of the officers on, I think he's actually the president of Okra Watershed or something like that, I'd have to go back and look, but. Nonetheless, we had a number of volunteers the weekend before, and then, so two weekends in a row, we had a significant amount of work completed. If you want to go to the next slide. So, this is actually during the event with Cecil Leadership Institute. I mean, you can see the number of people, I mean, just the amount of like trees cut, and you see the pile of logs, and, I mean, just amount of trash and everything. Next slide. And here's the scrap metal removed, I mean, this is just one angle of it. It's, that's like the front of the pile, and it's probably 12 feet back, pretty much that high. It's, I mean, it's, yeah, a lot of milk crates, engine block, I mean, we talked about some of the metal, but there was, um, this was our newest discovery, they're like, what do you call it, they're like the barriers you use for, like Army Corps of Engineers use them on, like, yeah, but it's, yeah, the corrugated metal, they drive for pilings and stuff into, to hold back shoreline falling in from the bay. I mean, just the, like, the weight of some of that stuff, there was, it was buried, but some milk coolers that probably weighed alone 400 or 500 pounds apiece. I mean, we couldn't, we took a crew of people and just gave up on trying to lift them. We finally, there was a guy with a tractor there that was a tremendous help. I don't think we hadn't gotten half of what we did without him, but. So, I mean, just the amount of scrap metal is just phenomenal. Next slide. I'm sorry, go back, it was actually on this slide. And this is what the area looks like now. We're still trying to get some of the scrap metal out, we ran out of time. But you can see that whole hill's been cleared off, and so now we just need to go to the next step of starting to work on, getting the grading done there, so that we can work our way up that hill. So, next slide. Before I move on to this, so some interesting facts and figures about our trash removal at Veterans Park. And some of this will even be a surprise, I don't think there's too many people that know a couple of these numbers yet. I think previously, we talked about the tires, 1,400 pounds of tires. We have another pile of tires down there now, so we'll have to get those weighed. 900 pounds of mixed, mixed trash, but the metal is probably the most interesting. So far, we've already had hauled off 16,000 pounds of scrap metal. So, eight tons of scrap metal, just a phenomenal amount. And, and we did, we, the town received about $800 for that scrap metal. So, who would have thought this park project would actually start making the town money? I mean, just, anyway. The Triangle Dog Park, you know, this was actually a project that I've taken over from the mayor when the mayor was Commissioner Marion, rather than Mayor Marion. He was working on a boardwalk and environmental learning platform, and I've been happy to continue to see that to fruition. So, our, one of our scouts, Adam. So our, one of our scouts, Adam Parrott, who has been on this piece of the project since the beginning, is building the bridge and the boardwalk leading up from the sidewalk to the bridge. So you can see the bridge is completed, well, the bridge is, not the surface, but the bridge span has been completed a while ago. When they were digging out at the sidewalk, we were talking about the water that started running out, and there they are with a half-gallon jug, trying to get the water out. We suggested it might be better just to dig the rest of the dirt out and let it drain on its own. They proceeded to build the rest of the boardwalk down, and it's actually surfaced down. They ran out of treks, so we'll need to get another load, they're going to have to get more treks in to complete that. But once that's completed, that project, one last thing would be curbing for wheelchairs to prevent somebody that's handicapped from rolling off the edge, and possible, we're trying to figure out exactly which sections are going to need handrail, so that's, that's the only two pieces that'll be left, once we get the.
And a big thank you to Lowe's for giving us the discount on the treks.
Basically, it was that cost. So, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Commissioner, for going down and, you know, beating them up for that discount. So, next slide. And so here was something I, I thought was interesting. I've been over there a number of times, where you couldn't find parking, and a lot of times, they park in the grass and such, and this was a view of the parking lot coming through the other day. Admittedly, one of the cars is mine, but you can see they're, they're now resorting to triple parking in the parking lot. I don't even know how you would get that middle set of cars out. So that's how busy that park has become. I mean, I don't think it was anywhere near that busy in, in Pasla. And that's, I mean, yeah, there were ballgames going on, so the, it was parked up for that too, but that's how heavy the usage is on that playground. I mean, it, the, like, a typical weekend, you can't find parking at that park anymore. I mean, they're just parking all over the grass, they're double and triple parking. We may have to start looking at, at doing something over there to, yeah, some kind of parking solution that will keep the grass from getting torn up, because that's, that is starting to become a little bit of a concern, is the amount of traffic on our, on our grass. So I think that's the conclusion of those slides. The only other piece that I wanted to talk a little bit about was the DNR grant that we submitted. That has been, it was submitted April 30th. We will not know what the results of that are until about the end of June, so if we're awarded any of that, it'll be in the end of June. I think there was, I think we previously presented some of that plan, and the, the one thing that, it was narrowed a little bit to remove the, the portion of the town parking lot, due to the fact that they would have to go 450 feet to connect into a stormwater pipe, and it would require substantial construction on Main Street, and that really is outside the scope of the grant. So the, we really kind of narrowed the scope to just within Veterans Park, and the American Legion lands behind it. And so hopefully, we'll, we'll have some success on that, and if, if we don't this year, we'll just repli next year. We've got everything put together, that'll give us a little more time to prepare some additional information, and submit it again. So that's, I hope we get it this year, but, you know, just in case. We're already starting to think about, you know, what the alternative is. So, and with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. The only thing that I would add to Parks and Rec is, we were lucky enough to get a substantial amount of money from Martins for our first two movie-in-the-park showings. Martins is covering the cost of both of those showings, and I am looking for more donors right now to cover the last one. So that is great, that they are stepping up, and not only are they going to, not only did they put forward the money, it was $450, if I remember correctly, but they also are going to have volunteers come down and hand out, they're going to do giveaways and freebies and that type of stuff down there. So that'll be great.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, one more thing I forgot to mention. Commissioner Arthur Reeth alluded to the new sliding board. I, and I would like to, again, thank, you know, Ron Thomas, Darrell Grant, and, and Chris, for getting the new sliding board installed over at the park. I mean, that, you know, I know they've been incredibly busy between the stuff up on Ryan Drive, and, and I've even had them busy in the parks, you know, installing swings and putting stone down, things like that, but they still managed to find some time the other day and get that installed, so I appreciate all their work.
Before I adjourn the, the, before I ask for adjournment, the next town meeting will be Tuesday, May the 25th.
26th.
26th, excuse me, 26th. Myself and some members of the elected body will be attending the Wilmington-Blue Rocks game tomorrow night, which is Cecil County night. A few other members of different towns are going to be there as well, and they asked me to throw out the first pitch, so I'm excited about that, too. So can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight?
Move adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Meeting adjourned.
We're going.